All right, let's go ahead and begin. We want to welcome all of you out to our weekly meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, the 26th day of January 2016. We appreciate all of you being here today. As you know, the Legislative Session is in full swing and we're right in the middle of that as well as our duties here, so we're coming and going and hopefully accomplishing some good things. We appreciate what they do for us down there this time of year, but it takes a lot of checking as well and a lot of following up. So, let's go ahead and begin with our invocation, which will be offered by Commissioner Bell. Pledge of Allegiance offered today by Brooke Stewart. Thought of the day by Commissioner Ebert. We'll go to that point.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to be here as community and government officials to continue to do the people's business, to do the things that would be best served so that the people of Weber County and the state of Utah may be able to have enriched and lives. And we ask for these blessings to be upon this meeting. In Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Please speak.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Waiting for the audience to be seated. Everybody, okay. Last week, Commissioner Gibson, in his thought, talked briefly about Alan Griffin passing away, and I mentioned briefly in that that Alton was a kind of a cowboy poet. He had a poet for every occasion, a poem for every occasion. And so, at his funeral, actually on the back of the agenda of the meeting, actually was one of his favorite poems that he had told numerous times, and I thought that I'd be probably apt today to read that.
The tree that never had to fight for sun and sky and air and light, but stood out in the open plain and always got its share of rain, never became a forest king, but lived and died a scrubby thing. The man who never had to toil to gain a farm, his patch of soil, who never had to win his share of sun and sky and light and air, never became a manly man, but lived and died as he began. Good timber does not grow with ease. The stronger wind, the stronger trees. The further sky, the greater length, the more the storm, the more the strength. By sun and cold, by rain and snow, in trees and men, good timbers grow. Where thickest lies the forest growth, we find the patriarchs of both, and they hold counsel with the stars whose broken branches show the scars of many winds and much strife. This is the common law of life. Thank you.
So, we ought to be grateful for our challenges? Is that what you're telling us? Is that a jab at me? No. Not at all. It's just...
Yes.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Well, we see Sylvia has come in. We almost don't know what to do if she doesn't come. Welcome Sylvia, thank you.
Oh, okay. We were talking about Sylvia to send somebody out to find you.
The sheriff's office is...
Yeah, we were just gonna call and say, you know, we don't know where she is, so thank you for being here.
We see, I see one of my neighbors, Gary Nelson. Good to see you here, Gary. Appreciate you coming and supporting. And our new planning director, welcome Rick. Good to see you again. Are you on the clock today?
On the clock.
Oh, I like it, I like it. And Marty, of course, one of our department heads, and Jan, welcome. Andy, all of you, thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move to our consent items. Item number one is request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $131,875.81. Request for approval of warrants number 400565 through 400771 in the amount of $1,587,744.68. Request for approval for the minutes of the meeting held on January 19th of 2016. Request from the Weber County Parks Department for approval of an application for eligibility of a federal surplus property program. Commissioners, any questions before we go to Ricky? Give us a rundown on those. Okay Ricky, Commissioner, Mr. Hatch?
Okay, we had 29 purchase orders for $132,000. That split up primarily amongst four different categories. Thirty-four percent or $45,000 went to the ice, for the ice sheet, and that was concessions, cleaning supplies, and equipment repair. Twenty-seven percent or $36,000 was for the library, and that was for an, primarily for an interactive console with a touchscreen. Twenty-one percent or $28,000 was in behalf of the transfer station, and that's also for supplies, repairs, and some temporary labor. Twelve percent or $16,000 was for the landfill gas recovery, and that was for supplies. As far as our checks go, we had 207 checks this week for $1.6 million. Half of that, or $833,000, was the countywide medical and dental insurance premiums. Six percent or $99,000 went to the public defender's office, and that was primarily wages or a contract with the public defenders. Five percent or $87,000 was for Public Works, and that was for flood mitigation.
Any questions for Ricky on those?
I'll make a motion. Will you adopt the consent items as ready?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second then to adopt those consent items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It passes. Thank you for that. To item number one on our action items, Andy, if you'll come on up. This one is the request for the approval of resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County appointing a member to the Weber Housing Authority Board.
We had a board member that recently resigned, and so we need commission approval to appoint a new board member. So, the board has identified three individuals that they think would be good replacements. The first is Marisha Bosketter, Randy Chappell, Chappell, and Scott Parkinson. And so, the commission just needs to appoint a new board member.
Did you have a recommendation?
Um, no, those are the three recommendations.
Oh, they're all good people. Her choice. I agree. One of the issues, I think, we want to make sure that we meet the requirements, the bylaws. Is there a requirement specific to who represents?
Yes, they do have to be a member of the nonprofit community.
And the board member we're replacing?
Marcy Valdez from Catholic Community Services.
Catholic Community Services, okay. So, do all three of these meet the nonprofit?
Yes.
Well, you have any comments?
No other, I was gonna turn to you because you're the commissioner that serves on that board. If you have a recommendation, I'd be likely to follow it.
Well, I think we would like to stay, I personally probably would like to stay with Catholic Community Services. They've been a tremendous resource.
Mm-hmm.
And Marie Shabasky, I think, would fit that and do a tremendous job. She's very active in the community, and I think she would continue the great work that's been done there in that seat.
Yeah.
So, that, my recommendation would be Marie Shabasky.
So, have they, have they been, all been notified and they're all willing to serve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That didn't sound very confident.
We talked to Marisha about it. I'm not, I'm not familiar with the other two individuals.
Okay.
But we, we did talk to Marisha.
Okay, great. Mr. Bell, anything you want to add?
No, I think it sounds good. I think Scott Parkinson, he would have been great on there too. So, as things move forward, he, he'd be great to get a little more involved with the county. He's been a great supporter of things in the county in Ogden for a lot of years, so... But I'll second that motion if that was a motion.
Resolution two.
Did you make that in form of a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, if I can make one comment, we have, as a board, started the process of evaluating if we want to add two members. And so, that will be noted that there's a recommendation, that if we do extend it, maybe we would look at Mr. Scott Parkinson.
Absolutely, he'd be great.
So, I would make that in the form of a motion, that Marie Shabasky to be appointed to the Weber Housing Authority Board Commission as a representative of a nonprofit.
Commissioner Bell seconded that, that's resolution number two. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Jared Gibson?
Aye. The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Item number two, request for approval to amend change order number three, 2015-396 for granite construction on Phase One of the 3500 West project from $194,139.39 to Going down?
Yes, and that's not, this actually should have been on the consent item, but that's okay, we can go through and action, and I didn't purposefully put it on here just to show that, but yes, it's just a change order that we have with the project, and it is going down, reduction in fees, so...
And I want to take that while we can, those don't happen very often.
That's correct.
Usually the other way around. Okay, mistake, or?
Um, no, just a reduction in cost, but with the different things and going through everything that we're doing out there.
Great.
It was a reduction, so it's a, it's a good thing.
Okay. Motion, anyone?
I'll make a motion. That we amend change order number three for granite construction from $194,139.39 to $27,764.14.
I second that.
Okay, motion in a second, discussion to the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any non-voting? Okay, pass it two to nothing. Oh, did you vote?
I vote, yay.
Okay, good. Passes three to zero.
Sorry.
Okay, item number three, request for approval of a right-of-way contract buying between Weber County and the following for the 3500 West project, Mr. Francis and Noah Hesselgesser, parcel 109. Jared?
Um, no, just, just similar to, to the next two, and similar to what we're doing in the past, we, in particular, the, the next one, but this one also, we're, if you remember, we've been getting right to occupy so we can at least start construction, so these ones that are coming in now, where we, where we're going to start construction, we're actually getting the contracts signed now, so just, just moving forward with the process and getting, getting them finalized.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You accept, do you want me to read?
I'll make a motion.
You don't need to, just to approve the contract between, on 3500 West.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes. Okay, item number four, on the same wavelength, request for approval of two right-of-way contracts buying between Weber County and the following on the 12th Street project, Cody and Teresa Ostler, and Scott and Deborah Conley, those are numbers 151 and 171. Anything we need to know specific about these that are any different than what we've seen in the past?
Just excited to move forward with them and get through, get through all their items, so...
Same type of thing, okay. Motion then?
I, I know that the Conleys expressed a lot of concerns. It's nice to see that we came to some type of agreement with them, so I appreciate the work.
You know, and I think that, that's what it comes down to now with these last individuals, is they all had more concerns than what you typically have, and we sit down with them and get through it, and yeah, it's a, it's a good thing, really good thing to get, come to a conclusion on these, so...
Great. I'll make a motion. We approve two right-of-way contracts buying between Weber County for the 12th Street project with the Ostlers and the Conleys, parcels 151 and 171.
I second that.
Okay, motion in a second then, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It passes. Item number five, request, I think, you on this one too, Jared?
Next to.
Correct. Okay. Request for approval of an interlocal cooperation agreement buying between Weber County and Weber Basin Water Conservancy District for their portion of the cost to relocate the water line in 12th Street as a part of the road widening project.
Um, yeah, we're, we're coming in and really reconstructing this road. So, as we came through with, with utilities similar to Weber Basin, we said, well, we're gonna reconstruct the road anyways. If you, if you want to move your line, this is a good opportunity to move it, upgrade it, whatever they want to do, and some chose not to do anything, and we protect in place, but Weber Basin said, yeah, we, it's a good opportunity for us, we need to upgrade our line, we're not paying for that upgrade, but, but we are coming in and reconstructing the road anyway, so those costs will be, will be taken off of what Weber Basin would have to pay, so it's a really good opportunity for both entities to work together to make that happen, and this agreement covers, covers all that.
So, they bear the cost of their infrastructure, and we bear the cost of our infrastructure?
And, yeah, and I wouldn't say our infrastructure as much as, we've got to dig that road down anyways, so if they've got to replace their line without us doing it, they're gonna have to pay the cost to dig the road down and put it back in and put the asphalt on, we're doing that anyways, so they're paying for the cost to just upgrade and...
So, they'll put new pipe in, we'll put the pavement over it, they don't have to go cut the road and do all that, so I think the more people that do that, because irritates people more than anything, when the government gets done building these big fancy roads, then three weeks later, someone's drilling a hole in it, or cutting across it, or changing a pipe, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, it's, it's worked real well.
And frankly, I'm not aware of really any infrastructure in that road that's up to date, other than, I know Taylor West Weaver did a project on their water line a year or two ago, but, and it's the power, I mean, this is a good opportunity because the power's terrible, but...
Right.
Yeah, I've heard that Weber Basin's line is at capacity, if not...
Oh, so they'll put a bigger line in too?
Bigger line, and then it's age also, yep, both, so...
That'll be great. So, that'll help as we, as things happen out west, there'll be a little more water out there.
Yes.
So, did the cattle crossings all get put in, in the usual spots?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
They put cattle pulls.
Oh, I just got kicked, sorry.
Didn't know cattle crossed the road in West Weaver. So, it is...
Do they have cows out there?
It is nice to see, a lot of times people aren't aware, citizens aren't aware, of all the different parts, of all the moving parts in these types of projects, and to see that we have partners that are taking the opportunity to do upgrades that benefits the community, short-term and into the long, you know, long run, especially if they're increasing capacity and different things, whether it's electricity or water, I think continues to be a positive and provides better services to the citizens out there, and the citizens will eventually move out there, so it's good to see that they're participating in it, and it doesn't look like it's a cheap project, which sometimes, if we can mitigate some of that costs, gets them to kind of leverage their funds a little more and allows their dollars to go a little further.
That's correct.
Projects get done now instead of getting done in 15 years, so...
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this one? All right, motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept a resolution between Weber County and Weber Basin.
Second, resolution three?
Three.
Oh, so resolutions need numbers, but...
Contracts don't.
Contracts don't, okay, I'm sorry.
Resolutions and ordinances need numbers.
Okay.
This, this first one's the contract, and then the resolution will be next.
Oh, so this was, this is contract? Okay, so this will be the contract.
Okay, like I said, no number, the contract.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It passes. So, number six then is the agreement by resolution between Weber County and Weber Basin on the same issue, so that would be number three.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number three between Weber Basin and Weber County.
Second. Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Jared Gibson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, thanks Jared, appreciate you. Item number seven, request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and James Ritalik to request, represent indigent defendants in the district court. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. This is the last remaining contract, Mr. Ritalik didn't get his back to us on time to be in last week's batch, so it is here today. Unless you have questions, I just recommend you approve it.
I think it's great, you've done a lot of work on these contracts, and glad to have them done, so I'll make a motion, we accept a contract between Weber County and James Ritalik to do indigent defense in district court.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second then to approve this contract. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. And Jan, if you'll come up to the microphone, this is a request for approval of contract buying between Weber County and Great Basin Antique Machinery to have an antique machinery, to have antique machinery on display, hold tractor pulls, and a tractor parade at the 2016 Weber County Fair. This might be our first one for the fair for the year, our first contract?
Yes.
So, we're gonna see a few more of these, huh?
I hope so. Yes, um, this is a contract, like you said, with antique farm machinery. The contract's for $800. This is a longstanding attraction that we have had at the county fair, and the fair board has asked that I bring this to you to have you approve it, if you have any questions.
Great.
I hope I can answer.
This is kind of one of those longstanding ones that we've seen over and over again, the price hasn't changed, right? Something a lot of people look forward to. Any questions, Commissioners, or comments?
Nope, I'll make a motion that we accept contract buying between Weber County and Great Basin Antique Machinery for the 2016 Weber County Fair.
I second that.
Okay, discussion to the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes, and the last one for you, Mrs. Wilson, is the request for approval of a contract buying between Weber County and Capital International Productions to have CJ's Animal Adventures, the Aussie Kingdom at the 2016 Weber County Fair.
This is an attraction that we've looked at for many years, and it just so happened that they were routed our direction, and we put a bid in on it, and we received that. The fair board seems to be very excited about it. It's a contract for $10,500, but as you read in the contract, the items that there, or the animals that they'll be bringing are animals that you wouldn't normally see here in Weber County. They bring kangaroos, wallabies, wallaroos, lorikeets, and cucarumbas. Cucarumbas? Is that, it's a song, Stacy's saying it to me today.
Can only imagine the marketing tag.
Yeah, I know, they're already having so much fun with it. Anyway, really exciting, a new attraction that will be here for the county fair, August 6th, 10th through the 13th this year, and the fair board again has asked me to bring this to you for your approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve a contract between Weber County and Capital International Productions. See CJ's Animal Adventures.
Sorry, second.
Sorry. Motion in a second on the floor, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thanks.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Move around a lot more for the next little while.
Next two weeks.
Okay, let's move into our public hearing, now that we've got all that other stuff out of the way. First, we need a motion to adjourn the public here, meeting and convene a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion in a second, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're in our public hearing. So, this is a public hearing to take action on a proposed creation of an agriculture protection area, and Fatima will be our presenter.
Yes, good morning Commissioners.
Good to see you.
So, the county received an application...
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Well, Commissioner Gibson...
I like that.
For those of you in the audience that haven't been here before, there's history behind that, because she is the one that enforces whether or not people state their name for the record. Every single week, somebody comes to that microphone and forgets, and she tells us from right there. She gets up and forgets it.
Yeah, we like it.
So, the county...
We'd like to see your ID first. We want name and ID to make sure it's you. Sorry.
Um, the county received an application for a proposal to create an agriculture protection area, or APA, from property owners Randy and Kami Marriott. The boundaries are along 700 North and approximately from 5900 West to 8700 West. So, this is a long process, it encompasses about 120 days, and I'm gonna give you just the highlights. The notice of proposal for creation of an agriculture protection area was published in a standard examiner. It was posted in five public places within the proposed area, and mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the proposed area. I received no public comments after 15 days from the publication date. And then, notice of this hearing was also published in a standard, posted in five public places, mailed out to the property owners within 1,000 feet, and was also posted in the state's public notice website. The Western Weber Planning Commission and the Advisory Board reviewed the application, and they recommend approval. And just as a side note, state code encourages the continuity development and viability of agriculture and agricultural protection areas in, in the counties. So, after you take verbal and written comment today, your options are to approve the application, to modify and approve it, or to reject it. And the applicant Kami Marriott is here. Do you have any questions of me?
Any questions before we bring Kami up?
No, I'd like to hear from Kami.
Okay, would you like to speak at all, Ms.?
Do you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
I don't, I've read through it, I think it's a, it's a good thing.
Okay.
See any issue with it?
Well, this is a public hearing, so if there are others then who would like to come up, and then if there are any questions from them, they could be answered by Ms. Marriott. Any other, anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this?
Waiting for comment, any comment.
Okay, sounds good. There's no other public that would like to comment, then we'll move directly into a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the public meeting. Motion to that effect. So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back in our public meeting, so now, as mentioned, we need to take action on this.
I would like to request we take action on the proposal for the creation of a agriculture protection area. Is there a number on that, or just?
It's not, it's not, it's not under my ordinance, no.
So, I make a motion that we do that.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion on the floor that we approve the agriculture protection area, and I just want to add to this discussion before we end, that this is one of those things that I think is a real benefit in our community, and some of these, there's, these, these ag protection areas, we received a flurry of them, I think after the state statute was passed a few, several years ago. Fatima worked on a whole bunch of them for a while, and, and then we haven't seen a lot, but agriculture remains a very important part of our community, and frankly, I hope we see some more of these. As we talked about a couple of months ago, I think that it's time that we readdress the fee structure, and I have been meaning to get to that, but haven't quite done that yet, so we need to readdress that fee structure, so Dave, will you remind me to do that? But we, we need to make it more possible, more, we need to make it more cost-effective for these agriculture operations to preserve, I think that, and to protect themselves, I think that the, one of the challenges that we have, and it's probably not a, a big challenge in this particular case, because it's a large tract of land owned by one owner, but we have out there a whole bunch of small parcels, right? There, there's a lot of these little chopped up small parcels, and when we have situations like that, and our ordinance states that there, that the fees are determined per, on a per parcel basis, and they can become really expensive, it keeps, keeps property owners from being able, on a cost-effective basis, to be able to enter into these contracts, and so, we need to address that. And I, I just want to give you a heads up that, Commissioners, that I'm, I'm hoping to work on that in the next couple of weeks, so hopefully we can encourage some more of these. I think it's a good thing now. Granted, I will, in the spirit of full disclosure, it does, this, this statute is meant to give property owners a leg up over local governments, and their abilities to do certain things, and, and frankly, in a lot of cases, local governments have not loved this ordinance, because it takes them out of the driver's seat in a couple of these particular cases. But I think it's one of those things that, that is for good reason, that we need to encourage, and I've said this a million times about how we maintain our, our agricultural base, and it's not by protecting them to death and forcing them to do things to protect themselves, it's by giving them tools and opportunities to continue to, to remain profitable,